Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for attending tonight's meeting. Before we begin, I'd like to state that the Planning Commission meetings are open to the public in person and via Microsoft Teams streaming application. All Planning Commission meeting information can be found on the Town of Monument's website. The Planning Commission's role is to conduct public hearings and to make recommendations to the town council regarding land use matters in the Town of Monument. Each commissioner agrees to a nonpartial, objective, and fair review, which includes no prejudgment of the projects. Should a commissioner wish to disqualify him or herself of any conflicts of personal or financial interest in this matter before us tonight, please say so now. No response? Thank you. For those attending tonight who wish to provide comment on agenda items, you may speak to the commission during the public comments section of the agenda. Those who attend in person will be called upon first and are asked to come to the podium and sign in with your name and address. Those attending via Microsoft Teams will be called upon next and are asked to utilize the raise your hand option and unmute your microphone when called upon. We ask that if multiple people have the same comment, only one person speak on that same subject. Again, thank you for attending. We will now begin the meeting with roll call.
Commissioner Egley?
Here.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Here.
Commissioner Peck?
Here.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. At this time, alternate Commissioner Peck is hereby appointed as a regular member of tonight's meeting. So again, thank you, Commissioner Peck, for standing up, and we appreciate you being here tonight. At this time, I'd like to move over to the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you'd please follow me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, I'd like to go ahead and get approval from the minutes from last meeting if I have an approval or if I have a motion for approval for the minutes from our last meeting.
Collins moves to approve.
Second.
And commissioners, would you mind saying your name because we have a new town clerk, Mr. Kyle Anderson? He's not quite sure of your names yet. He may not be able to see your names on the board. So if you make a motion, will you please just say your name? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Kyle, did you get the names on the individuals? Okay. At this time, we both have the approval and the second, and roll call, please. Trejo and I say yes, sir. Thank you. No worries.
Vice Chair Hours?
Yes.
Commissioner Zernico?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Egley?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Peck?
Yes.
Perfect. At that time, at this time, now that motion is approved. At this time, I move to modify the agenda to change the order to hear the items as two, or correction, for B then for A. Do I got a second?
Commissioner Egley, I second the motion.
One more roll call.
Commissioner Trejo?
Yes.
Commissioner Hours, Vice Chair Hours? My apologies. Commissioner Zernico?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Egley?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Peck?
Yes.
And now we need the motion to approve the modified agenda.
Perfect.
Commissioner Zernico, I need to approve the modified agenda for tonight's meeting.
Collins, second. Commissioner Chairperson Trejo?
Yes.
Chair, Vice Chair Hours?
Yes.
Commissioner Zernico?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Egley?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Peck?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you ready?
Yes.
So our next item is a presentation on the widening project, the Jackson Creek Parkway widening project. And for that, I'm going to have Steve Murray from FHU approach the podium.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Steve Murray with FHU. I'm the project manager for the Jackson Creek Parkway project. I'm working with Sheila on that, and Greg from the Town of Monument are the project managers. And so, let's see, we've got our slides up there. That's perfect. So what I'm going to be presenting on today is really a conglomerate of projects that are surrounding the Jackson Creek Parkway project. One of those is mine, but there's several others that are being led by other companies. We're trying to coordinate and act as one along the path to construction. And so, that's what I'm going to present on today. So I'll just kind of give you an idea of what's coming down the road in the next year. We expect many of these to be starting. So, next slide. So, real quickly, Jackson Creek Parkway today, this is looking north from the Higbee and Jackson Creek Parkway intersection. There's this unfinished leg, as you can see, we're looking to complete that as well as construction projects along Higbee and 105. And so, we'll talk about some of those. So next slide will kind of give you an idea of what we have intended for Jackson Creek Parkway as we head north. And next slide. The cross-section is going to be four lanes. We're looking for a lower speed section here. We're looking at a design speed of about 30 miles an hour. Trying to narrow this down. Why? Because we're going right by the school, the YMCA, and more heavily populated area here. So, this will be a slower cross-section, and we're looking at some real nice median improvements as well. Cassie with the town is looking at some nice gateway-type designs and treatments along the median. We're providing for bicycle lanes, pedestrians, and sidewalks. And so, it's kind of a complete streets idea as we go through this area. So with that in mind, let's talk through some timelines. And so, we have projects A through E that we'll be referring to. The first two are A and B, and the first one, A, is will be done by Classic. This is the timeline starting in Q2 2023, so starting soon. And these projects will go through 2025. So, to start that off, I'm going to ask Steve to come up and talk through Project A. So, next slide.
Thanks, Steve. So, Project A, which is the first phase, and appreciate all the coordination with the Town of Monument, CDOT, and El Paso County. This is a big project, and I know we all love roadwork projects. So, with where we are with Phase A, just kind of an oversight of where the timing is. We are in quarter two. We're finalizing contracts with a contractor. And best-case scenario, we're hoping to have that started here soon in quarter two and finish that as we go into quarter three, which would be perfect timing with the schools through D38. And as a dad that travels that corridor all the time, I can definitely appreciate that going up and down Jackson Creek Parkway. And then, we are also, we have the section which will, Steve will get into, which will be the next phase, B, that we have with the intersection at 105 in Jackson Creek Parkway. And that, right now, we're starting to receive some comments back from the Town of Paso County and preliminary comments back from CDOT. We submitted in quarter one. So as we work through those, there's a process, and CDOT will probably be the longest, which it also pulls into the off-ramp area. So, I will turn it back to Steve.
I think the important part about this one is some of this is interim improvements that will be thrown away when the full construction comes through, but they're also incorporating some final improvements that won't be thrown away as part of this. So this is really Phase One, interim improvements is how we call it.
Definitely, it's servicing both sides of, as you look through the slides, and if you zoom in, you'll see it services both sides of Monument Junction, but it definitely improves the intersection with that feeling lane, you know, double lane, all the way back to almost slope side there, which anybody that travels that area daily, you know, that right turn eastbound is where traffic starts to stop.
All right. So let's go to the next slide with B. And this is a project that's being done by HDR. We don't, I don't believe we have a representative for this project, so I'll just talk about it in general. This is, these are the improvements along 105. There was a PEL study that was done, and this is one of the first projects that El Paso County and HDR are putting out to construction. And this is just east of our Jackson Creek Parkway project, but it's important to know that that will be starting Q2 2023 as well. And so, the construction coordination is going to be important. There's going to be a lot of construction that's going to be happening all around this area. And so, that one will be starting up very soon. I think they're all geared up and ready to go. All right. Now we get into our next timeline.
Is this interim installed after that?
This is not interim. Yeah, in fact, the only interim project is the one that was presented to you is Project A. So, all right. So then, looking at the next timeline, then, you're looking at now Q4 2023 into 2025. So these will be starting a little bit later in the year, and this is where you get into our project, which you see up there in purple. And then, in green, along that's, along Higbee is another project that we'll talk about. So these are projects C through D. So let's go ahead and move to the next slide. All right. So the Higbee project is being done by Kimley Horn. Again, they are not here as well, but as you can see, there's a number of efforts here that are all being done. We're trying to, again, coordinate all as one so that the traveling public has a coordinated effort that they're seeing, and we've at least planned out the construction. But this will start in Q4 2023, or at least it's anticipated to, and end in 2025. And these will be improvements from Jackson Creek Parkway East along Higbee Road. And as you can see, there's a number of improvements in there from roundabouts to roadway improvements. And we can always provide more details there, but my focus here really is just when construction's starting. The next project? All right. This is where Steve gets back up and talks about the ultimate design that he has for Jackson Creek Parkway. And then, once he's done presenting on this, then I'll talk about our segment.
Commissioners, as you can see, the ultimate section, which would be from Fat Tire to the intersection poles and what I referred to with the CDOT piece coming off the off-ramp and then into the El Paso County piece there, heading to the eastbound side. And adding those through turns through that area, and then a double left onto 105 westbound. And then, you also have, as you're coming off to the eastbound side, you have a double going southbound on Jackson Creek Parkway. And this is the area that I referred in to as in quarter one, we put everything, Alfar Sismitl with plans. We're starting to get those comments back. And as you can see with the timelines, we're hoping quarter one 2024 that that project kicks off.
All right. And then, that's where our project comes in. We are finishing up the Jackson Creek Parkway project. We're tying in to the Classic portion, and we're coordinating our profiles and our templates. And this will all look like one project, really. We're most closely related with Steve and his team. But we will continue that all the way down to Higbee and tie into the project that Kimley Horn is doing along Higbee and Jackson Creek Parkway as well. And our project is federalized, and so, it's going through the NEPA class of action. It's a categorical exclusion. And so, we have to go through all the requirements for that. One of our challenges right now is finding a water quality pond. So, we've looked at several different locations, and we're looking to finalize that as we outfall into Teach Out Creek. And so, that's one of the challenges. Other than that, there's not a lot of environmental impacts here. It's more just coordinating with the surrounding development. There's a lot going on in the area, which is exciting for the Town of Monument, and accommodating the intersections and the development and the school and the needs of the corridor. So, that is what is going on with our segment. With that, I'll open it up to questions. And one thing I will say, too, before we get into questions, there's one more piece of this presentation, and that is the website. So with all of these different efforts that are going on, it's very important, as you can see, that we need to coordinate all these projects. And so, we're trying to do that and help the town with questions from the public and the different HOAs through the website. And so, Lisa Bachman will be presenting on the website that we've put together that will help us to show everything that we presented to you to all those in the Town of Monument. So, questions and any questions before we get into the website?
Are any of these roads going to be shut down for a day, a week, a month? Or will you be able to pass through them all the time?
The intention with our project, and I can't speak to all the other ones because I'm not leaving those, but the intention is that we would maintain traffic on the existing roadway while you build to the east. And so, it shouldn't be too bad of an impact on traffic. Will there be minor closures here and there? Yeah, of course. But on the most part, we'll be able to maintain traffic. Yeah. You notice?
Real quickly, at this time, what I'd like to do is just open this up for public comment. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on behalf of the public? If there's got any questions, anyone here? Please, sir, if you'd like to come on up, and if you would, go ahead and sign your name on the sheet there on the podium.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Sean Teagan. I live on 1515 Bowstring Road. And I have two questions about the Jackson Creek Park widening, particularly Phase or Project Echo E. What sort of considerations have there been for the dark sky light pollution with adding lighting to that for and how that may impact those neighborhoods that are close along Jackson Creek Parkway? That's my first question.
Yes, sir.
We are actually having a meeting on that on Thursday tomorrow, and so, we have incorporated the dark skies as part of our priority list. We are meeting with MBEA, our consultant. We're looking at some different designs, looking at the lighting fixtures that were down further south, trying not to emulate those going north. But yes, we are incorporating the dark skies where as much as possible as we can.
Okay. Thanks for our consideration. So I've been trying to look at those lights as I drive by, you know, the harness in the leather chaps area and just trying to project, figure out how far those are going out and how that might be impacting. And then, last is a question about what at the closest approach, because it looks like from your diagrams and the website, it's really helpful. So thanks for putting that together, that it's probably going to go from about a 22-foot wide roadway as of right now to maybe close to 100 if I added up all those different segments. So my curiosity is what is the closest approach to that bowstring bow there? And we can follow, I don't need, but a follow-up would be helpful on that, or tell me who I could speak to on that.
You can start with me. I'll contact you and make sure we get your name.
Okay. So do you want a phone number down here or my?
Yes.
Okay. Since I think I'm the only public person.
Yep, please. Take it down. Take it, just make sure I get it back.
Thank you, please.
Thank you, sir. Luke, do we got anybody on the line there? Thank you, sir. All right. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comments, and I'm going to open this up for commissioner comments to the applicant.
Would you like Lisa to present on the website, or you want to wait till after?
Sure. Lisa, you ready to go ahead and present that? Please, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners and town folks. My name is Lisa Bachman. Bachman PR is my firm, and I'm part of the FHU consultant team that's working on the Jackson Creek Parkway widening project. My role specifically is public engagement and public communication. I'm getting over cold, so excuse me for second on the cough drop. So we started off with this project, putting a website together, very basic, simple, clean. And as we had meetings with the town, we thought, you know, the public's going to want to know what are all the other projects going on in and around, rather than each of them individually. So, this project website starts with, under the homepage, and if you could scroll down through that, it's got some background information. There is a flyover, a drone flyover that you can look at. Talks about a little background about the Jackson Creek Parkway and what the plans are for the widening project. And then, then there's a project details section. There is a project timeline and project funding section. But I'd like to highlight the project maps tab, if you would. All of the maps that you just saw presented by Steve Murray will be on the website. This is still a bit of a draft, but we've broken down descriptions of every one of the projects, A through E, with a corresponding map. We've also included who the lead organizations are and the lead individuals and their contact information. So, the public will be able to go here, learn all about the Jackson Creek Parkway, but then they can click and see what the other projects are going on in and around the area. And then, there's a way for people under the public input, public information section to sign up to receive information on an ongoing basis. This is where we'll post the information about the public town hall, which we decided to carry this a little bit further, rather than just do a town hall about this one town project. We are including the El Paso County project team for the 105 project. So it'll be a joint public meeting. We'll certainly have the Classic folks there as well, and the folks from the Higbee project to answer questions. So it'll be more of an all-encompassing public meeting, so the public can hear about all the projects at one time and ask their questions. So, we have that. I hesitate to give out the date until we confirm the venue, because anything can change. We're looking at trying to do it at Palmer Ridge High School, but I just have to submit the proper forms and get that approved, but it'll be late May. So with that, are there any questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
At this time, open it to the commissioners. Perfect. Open forum, commissioners, any questions?
Commissioner Hours, I just have one question with regard to the portion that Classic's doing, that last portion you spoke to. You will complete that before the portion east, south of that is started. Is that, am I understanding that correct?
So, Phase A is the first phase, which is the interim improvement.
Right. Understanding.
Which services both sides of Jackson Creek Parkway with Monument Junction. And the T, which is the north end, is Phase B. So that is the last portion.
And what I'm saying, though, well, that portion, it appeared that portion would be done before they started the remainder of the Jackson Creek Parkway. That's.
Yeah, there is a possibility of that. I mean, as we go through the.
We did agree upon that, didn't we? In December, that that junction or that roadway would be completed.
That was the interim improvements, and that was with filing two plat. And that's where we talked about, Commissioner, where we had filing one with those lots going to market second quarter, which our timing aligns with that. So that was interim improvements would service that, and we had the secondary access off Knollwood for that filing one, once that went to market. Phase B, which is the intersection, which is El Paso County, CDOT, and Town of Monument section, that portion, if the timing is right, yes, that would start before FHU, but that's all based on the Sismitl process with CDOT. Like I said, we're starting to get those comments back.
All right.
I can add a little bit.
Well, real quick, I want to step back real quick, because again, the interim improvements were not discussed. However, there was a bond, and there were several different bonds that were associated for those intermittent improvements on Jackson Creek before we went into that second quarter. I still have a distinctive memory in relation to August/September timeframe when we talked about this, and Jackson, our Classic home, said, yes, that is the fact that we're going to have those improvements made before we open up on that second quarter. So I just want to make that for the record and make sure we go back and take a look at that, because it was very clear that the former town general manager, what was his name?
Planning?
No. Town manager.
Mike Foreman?
There. Mike Foreman even said that there was a million-dollar bond that the city had, there was a million-dollar bond that Classic was putting up, and that something was there that literally was putting in the interim improvements for the long term there at that intersection before the second quarter went in. We're going to have to go back and look at the records for that, because again, I think there's some difference in what we approved in what we're saying right now.
I think you're following the line close to what that conversation was, interim improvements. The financial assurances were put together, and that was a requirement for the plat to be recorded for filing one.
That's correct.
So that is what you're referencing. That's not what Mr. Hours is, he's talking about the other end, which is the ultimate, which is Phase B.
That's correct.
So Phase A, I think we're close in line. So Phase A, the interim improvements, yes, those are going in with, and the financial assurances were paid with that filing one plat for that area.
Okay.
So those, quarter two, is when that was starting, which we referenced, along with when we're starting to market those homes and filing one Phase A.
Okay. I'd still like to take a look at the record, just identify how that was worded.
Yeah, I think we're close on.
Well, close doesn't meet the requirement when it comes to the roadway and the traffic and the people and the cities here. So I want to make sure that it is very clear as to what that requirement was.
And what was that tied to? So I know what I'm looking.
So there with the.
Monument Junction?
Reformulation of filing one plat, the first 58 single-family lots, the requirement with that was the financial assurances to be paid for the interim improvements.
Correct. Thank you.
I was just going to, I was going to tag on a little bit to what Steve was saying. With their ultimate improvements, you were asking if that would be completed before FHU started?
Correct.
I think they may have them concurrently. If, if both of us have our timing right, and that's our intention is that both plans would be ready and it would be one contractor that would build the whole thing seamlessly.
Okay, okay.
That would be the best case scenario.
Okay, all right.
That's, that's our intention. Thank you for the question.
This is Commissioner Agley. I had a question regarding financing and how you're paying for the project. Is all of that in place at this point?
That would be me. So we have some funding in place. We have grants in place. We have developer and property owner contributions. We have in kind and we are still short, so it's my job to keep going out and searching for grants and additional funding to finish up. I think the last, we were about eight million in the hole. But a lot of that depends on what the ultimate construction costs are. We've gone anywhere from 15 million to 23 million, depending on what the concrete and everything is at that time. So if they go down, we're great. If they stay where they are, we're still a little short. So we're working on it.
Any other questions? No questions. At this time, we close the comments from the commissioners.
Well, then that's it. So thank you for coming and doing the presentation for us. And like you said, we'll be doing the same presentation to town council on May 1st and then following up with our public engagement for the neighborhoods in late May.
Thank you, ma'am. At this point, we're going to go ahead and move on to our second agenda item and that second agenda item. In this case, items four A and four B will be presented together. And that will be both the request by classic homes for a preliminary final plat or final PUD, known as Midtown Collection at Monument Junction West filing number one on 2.17 acres and generally located on the west side of Jackson Creek Parkway South at Highway 105 parcels number 7114305001 and 7114305003. Jeff, this is for you.
And I just want to be put, put on notice. This is our first presentation on this. This is not one of those cases that we handled from the beginning. We took this one over from Jacobs. But we wanted to take it from there for planning commission and council so we could start getting in the process and going through that. So we're hoping to have all of your answers, but we may not have all of them and we may have to lean on our applicant for some if you have.
Perfect. Thank you. Please, Jeff, all you.
All right. Very, very good. Thank you commissioners for your patience as we dial this in. And yes, so we are presenting to you tonight a request for a Midtown Collection at Monument Junction West filing number one preliminary final PUD and final plat. Project context, we are in the project site is at 1595 Slope Side Street, southeast of the I-25 Highway 105 interchange between I-25 and Jackson Creek Parkway. Again, this is a request for a preliminary and final PUD plan along with a concurrent final plat. Project request and details. The project area for the proposed plan is 21.7 acres. This is the southwest portion of the Monument Junction community. It's proposed use is single family detached. This is that portion of the 21.7 to 16.9 acres. And then we have a community park with stormwater drainage, which is the remaining 4.8 acres. The density, eight dwelling units per acre. There, the proposal is 129 proposed units. Existing zoning, this is currently a PUD. To the north of the site is the same PUD. To the south, we have a PCD zoning out of Regency Park overlay. To the east, we have a continuation of the PUD that we are interacting with for Monument Junction. And to the west, again, PUD. All of the lots are vacant. Some are associated with commercial, some are associated with residential uses being envisioned. In terms of continuation, continuing of the zoning of note, June 15th, 2020, the planned development PD and PD sketch plan for the village was approved. Now, as we move forward, it has been referred to as Monument Junction planned unit development. In terms of the comprehensive plan, the future land use map designated the area for mixed use. Mixed use is defined in the comprehensive plan as a mixture of non-residential and residential development. It provides convenience, goods, services and employment opportunities for area residents. Through that review of that, the proposed users uses are in general conformance with the future land use map. Taking a little bit further, we have, we did do a review of principles, opportunities and policy. The ones listed that correspond with the comprehensive plan and this proposed PUD principal LU dash one roman numeral I provide a wider array of land use types to meet changing needs and help ensure the fiscal sustainability of the community. Opportunity LU hyphen A, an opportunity to move from single use developments to a mix of complementary land uses. These uses can be developed into various activity nodes, thereby ensuring an appropriate balance of live, work and play environments. Opportunity POS hyphen A, planned developments provide more amenities than traditional zoning in return for greater flexibility. When approving a planned developments, look at ways to locate dedicated land and trails to connect with existing parks, trails and usable open space. Carrying that further, policy LU hyphen one, encourage the use of sustainable development practices, including site planning techniques and new technologies to ensure that views, vistas, dark skies, environmentally sensitive areas and open lands are integrated into new developments. Policy LU three, allow for a wider array of land use types to meet changing community needs. Policy LU five, promote infill development on vacant land with attention to the vacant or underutilized land in and around the downtown core. Moving on from comprehensive plan, traffic study on the high end in reviewing. The proposed development will create 423 trips on a typical weekday. In general, there'll be an LOS of C or better. This is in the short term to, in speaking to this development as it comes in online before the full build out of Jackson Creek Parkway. A traffic signal at this point in that respect of a short term is not warranted. Those are the three major findings. LOS level of service, if you aren't familiar with that, I expect that all of the planning commission is. This is just a general understanding of how that is assessed, what the different levels are, A through F. It has a lot to do with basically how long a car sitting at an intersection at a stop. For this particular development, we've got three intersections that are involved. Oktoberfest, oops, Oktoberfest Drive, Slope Side Drive and Broken Compass Drive. Both Oktoberfest Drive and Broken Compass are expected to function LOS of B. Slope Side Drive, sorry, backing up, those two intersections will also be stop signs and notably right turn only intersections. Slope Side Drive and Jackson Creek Parkway, this at the time is expected to be a stop sign. However, a traffic light, if warranted, because the intersection will be full motion. The possibility is that it may will function as an LOS B. C, what drives the notion of a possible traffic light is that there is potential anticipation that the northbound left turn may function at an F LOS rating at some point. Drainage basins, there's two involved in this development. We've got Dirty Woman Creek to the north, Teachout Creek to the south. For the most part, existing drainage and channel along the north edge of the PD has minimal riparian vegetation and is captured in track day detention pond. Utilities, Woodmore Water and Sanitation District number one will be serving. Black Hills Energy will be providing gas, Mountain View Electrical Association for electrical. Wildlife, there's no significant wildlife habitats identified on the site per the reports that were provided. Wildfire report states that there is a low at risk rating for a wildfire in the area. And of note, the development proposed offers 13 fire hydrants to be built for the development. Geo hazard, no usual and can, no unusual conditions. Areas of expansive soils, there's loose and can lapseable soils and there's some shallow groundwater. But all of that, there are mitigation measures provided in the report to address all of those issues. Public improvements. So we do have a final plat associated with this proposal tonight. Public improvements, there has been ongoing conversation about the PIA and what that will look like. But in general, in terms of street infrastructure, Oktoberfest Drive, Jackson Creek Parkway, Slope Side Drive and Jackson Creek Parkway, Broken Compass Drive and Jackson Creek Parkway and then Jackson Creek Parkway itself. Of note, we're looking at basically deceleration lanes for the most part in all three of these intersections. Slope Side Drive highlighted here, the northbound left turn lane queuing again, may warn a traffic light in full bolted out scenarios, but not in the short term. And then from Jackson Creek Parkway, west side frontage, there is some anticipated from this development, a part of what's the needed roadway widening will come from this and some landscaping and sidewalk improvements. Site access, so taking a little bit further and getting into notions of transportation beyond the car, pedestrian and whatnot. Public streets will be the Slope Side Street, Broken Campus Drive and Oktoberfest Drive. Private roads will be individual lot driveway accesses and there'll be pedestrian trail systems throughout. The public streets will be owned and maintained by the Town of Monument. The, all the accesses onto Jackson Creek Parkway, as we've mentioned, the general section for the Jackson Creek will be, I'm sorry, for these streets will be a local type two residential with sidewalks of five foot attached. On the private roads, these will be owned and maintained by Monument Junction, which is Paulton District. There will be no sidewalks on those private roads. The pedestrian connections will be trail system of a five foot concrete trail. That is what's been proposed. Sidewalks, oops, sidewalks through the open space tracks at front of lots, connected to trails proposed to the north and south sidewalks along public streets and along the perimeter of the development. Again, this will be owned and maintained by the Monument Junction, which is Paulton District. Land dedication, so school and park, school, there's no land dedication. There is a fee in lieu. The total for the project will be $230,136. Park, there will be a dedication. What's required based on the parameters of the development and code is 196 acres. What I say 196? Oh, there's a, there's a decimal point. Oh, silly me. Steve, do you want to do 196? Just kidding. 1.96 acres is what's required. 4.778 acres is what's being provided. Open space, there's a 6.25 acres and the park and open space dedication requirements are being met based on that review. Just to for, to entice you a little bit before the presentation by the applicant. One commissioner asked for some of the products being presented be included. Here's three examples. There are more, but this is just a sampling of. For your notice, public notice was provided. There was a published in the Gazette on the 23rd of March, posted on the property on the 27th of March, mailed to owners within 500 feet on 28th. No letters of opposition or agreement were received by staff. For the record, we have a list of all of the review and approval criteria for preliminary PUD. Section 1803450 of the code. Staff has reviewed that. We feel that it meets all criteria. Same is true for the final PUD in section 1803460 review. Again, for record, essentially both are the same criteria. They're just reordered and restructured a little bit between the two. With that, staff's recommendation on the PUD is that the, it is consistent with applicable criteria from these both sections. 1803450 and 1803460, the land development code, it's generally consistent with comprehensive plan. Staff recommendation is approval. Midtown Collection at Mon, at Monument Junction West filing number one preliminary final PUD based on the findings that the proposed preliminary final PUD plan is in conformance with the review and approval criteria as outlined in the Town of Monuments Land Development Code. Before we jump into questions, I'm going to jump to the plat presentation and just run through that. All right. We still see that? Yes, great. Okay. So we can't see that?
No.
Oh, okay. So that's. There we go.
We're gonna have to stop sharing and reshare.
Okay. Yep. Yeah, there we go. Okay. Okay, in concurrently running with that application, we had the final plat. Same location, of course. This is the filing, so this is from Midtown Collection at Monument Junction West filing number one. A replat of tracks A, B and C is plotted in Monument Junction West filing number one. This request, basically, we're replating tracks A, B and C of Monument Junction West filing number one, recorded under reception number 222714952, Town of Monument, El Paso County, Colorado. In this plat, it's accommodating 129 single family lots with one four point acre tract for a public park. Tracks B and J of the existing plat are for public utilities, public drainage, open space, pedestrian access and private streets. This is just for record, a quick scan of the three sheets that are part of that plat to give you a general sense of character. Again, this is 129 single family lots with one four point acre tract for a public park. Breaking that down a little bit further, the tract for the four point acre park, the northern portion of the proposed filing plat and the southern portion, giving you a sense of lots, lot dimensions, layout, what have you. Existing zoning, we, as we discussed in the PUD, this is an existing PUD. There is history with PUD of being the sketch plan for the village that was approved in June 15th, 2020, now referred to as Monument Junction planned unit development. Comprehensive plan, again, we find that is conformance with the future land use map and generally conforming with the general plant, general comprehensive plan. Principles were listed and read through, again, listed here. For the final plat, it has its own review approval criteria, section 1802260. Again, staff has reviewed this. We feel that it meets all of the criteria and approval standards. Public notice again was provided along with the beauty here for the plat. Staff's recommendation, again, this is consistent with applicable criteria from section 1802260, the land development code. Generally consistent with the comprehensive plan. We recommend that Midtown Collection at Monument Junction West filing number one final plat based on the findings that the proposed final plat is in conformance with the review and approval criteria as outlined in the Town of Monuments Land Development Code be approved. We can either go through, through questions. We also have presentations that are being provided by the applicant that they can do now if you'd like.
At this time, yeah, what we got, if we can go ahead and have the applicant go ahead and present. That way we have all of that and then we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment, please.
Awkward here. You can't really see the screen without craning the neck of the side, but Andrea Barlow with NEES. Good evening commissioners, representing classic homes on the Midtown Collection at Monument Junction. Our, our presentation is going to concentrate primarily on the primary preliminary and final PUD plan. We really didn't present a, have a presentation on the plat, it's, it follows on naturally. If you like one, you'd like the other, if you don't, you won't like the other, so simple as that. And the criteria are very objective when you get to the final plat stage of whether we've met kind of various criteria of the code and the criteria manuals and so on. So, next slide. So site location, I think you're fairly familiar, this shows the lotting pattern on the west side of Jackson Creek for the Monument Junction West filing one. And this is the area in red and it was track C, B, and A, or A, B, and C of the original plats, the other, the other areas, lot five has been approved for multifamily residential. Lot four has been approved for commercial development. And lots one and two and three are also proposed for future commercial. Lot six is likely to be some sort of community use or commercial use, that's the plan for lot six, nothing has been finalized on that. And then on the east side, Monument Junction Phase One is all single-family residential and an area of duplexes of varying densities, starting at a lower density from the south, moving to higher density to the north. And I've got a little bit more information on that when we look at the sketch plan that was approved. Next slide. So the zoning history has been explained a little bit, but prior to twenty twenty, when the new code was adopted, it was zone PCD, which is a commercial development, a planned commercial development zoning. Next slide. In twenty twenty, the property was rezoned to PD, which was the planned development designation at the time for a mix of uses, included variety of residential densities and tights, commercial and mixed-use development. And with the recent zoning code changes, that was reclassified to PUD. So it's, it's still the same zoning, it carries forward, but just different terminology. Next slide. So with regard to the approved sketch plan, there were a variety of residential densities, as I indicated, on the east side, which has now been approved, we, we look very much at the densities of the surrounding neighborhoods, the existing surrounding neighborhoods, which were lower on the south side, getting increasingly more dense as we move to the north. And we reflected those densities as we moved through the east side of the development. When we got to the west side, we focused on again, some higher density, single-family residential with a mix of a commercial and mixed-use areas in the red and blue and then an area on the north and west side that was identified for multifamily. The one thing that has changed is seven hundred and forty-five maximum residential units were proposed at the time and fourteen acres of open space. The one thing that changed as we went through the process with the plating of the west side was really the location of the commercial and the multifamily. So the commercial got moved to the north of the property, the multifamily was consolidated in that kind of middle third of the property and we're still looking at that south end though for the midtown area that we're considering today. So the none of the acreages or the densities changed, just the location of those parcels. Next slide. So this shows the parcels we're looking at today in the context of the approved Monument Junction West filing number one plat. So the, the larger tract on the south side, which was identified for future development is the area that we are looking at really today for the midtown development. There is a small tract B in there, tiny little tract, which is therefore is a director's parcel. And that's for the purposes of the metropolitan district, which has also been approved. And that will get absorbed into this development. And then tract A, there is the area that was identified as the park and stormwater detention facility. Next slide. So to give you a bit more information about this development, so the plan includes the Midtown Collection development together with the proposed park detention area, it doesn't include lot six, but it does include the two access roads. So that, the two primary access roads coming into the development are are public streets, so there's a loop of a public street that circulates around the project and through it, and then off those streets to service the residential units are narrower private roads. And just so you get a feel for this, the, the design of this is an alley loaded or rear-loaded product. So they have access from, from the rear and they front onto green spaces and green areas. So they are, they function very much like a traditional townhome in that regard, except these are detached. They, they are separated, but they are functioning very much in the context of a townhome where you front onto common green space and you have rear-loaded garages at the back. So if you're familiar with townhome developments or a few monuments, very similar to that. And with that, we have a total area of twenty-one point seven acres, including the park. That gives us a gross density of five point nine five, but the net density, if you exclude the park, is, is in that seven, seven point six zone, so we are, per the sketch plan, we were in an area of a density of five to twelve units per acre. So we're really on the, the lower side of that, that density range. So it is very consistent with what we were anticipating on the sketch plan, maybe slightly less. The park areas, I noted, I talked a little bit about that, it is identified as stormwater detention as well. But one thing that classic is trying to do is to make better use of their detention ponds because for the majority of the year, they just vacant and they don't function as for detention. It will still have that functionality, but it is intended to be a dual use of a, a, a park that can have a sports field in there. It's also set up, you may see the kind of lines around the east side, southern east side. They're retaining walls, but they're also being designed to serve as seating, so like a terrace seating area. So it could act as, act as like a small amphitheater type area for, for events. And, and then there's a small play area proposed as well in the corner of the, in the area, at the corner of the, the two roads where the intersection is, so on the northwest corner of that intersection, a play area is proposed with some seating. And this will be a public park, it is going to be owned and maintained by the metropolitan district, was it, which is a public entity, quite a governmental entity, so it will be open to the public. Other aspects of the development that are worth noting is with regard to parking, we are required to have two spaces per dwelling, dwelling unit. They can be in the garage or on a driveway, we have both here. So all of these units will have a two-car garage and they will also have a two-car driveway. In addition, there are scattered through the development, probably a bit difficult to see on this plan, but there are various pockets of off-street parking for guests, so one hundred and twenty-five spaces for guest parking, which is a substantial amount really compared to a lot of other developments. With that, I just want to point out that in addition to the park, there is that centralized green area which will provide amenity space for the residents, that's going to be more focused for the residents. It is still going to be owned and maintained by the metro district, so it's not a gated community, it is, it is open. And so, but that is going to be probably intended more to be amenity for the residents. And, and then there are other pockets of green space around the development to services amenity areas. And then there are, there's a trail, you can see that alongside the park area, it will connect up into the apartments to the north and then connect into the sidewalk system through Midtown. But with the Midtown product on the, on the side, at the front of the units, that front the green spaces, they have sidewalk connecting the front of all the units, so there is a continual sidewalk connection through the development. That those sidewalks are used to provide access to the units, but they are just general sidewalks through the development as well for others to use. I think really that's probably the main things I wanted to touch on in terms of the site layout. The site has, we have had meetings with the fire department regarding fire access through development. They are fine with the private roads, they are, they are wide enough to accommodate their vehicles, the turnings, the, the intersection turn movements provide adequate access for emergency vehicles. And similarly for service vehicles as well, such as garbage trucks, so they've all been designed with that in mind. There are also, that adequate turning is provided by the T intersections that you can see in various parts of the development. Next slide. So I just wanted to talk a bit about setbacks and buffering in the context of what was required by the sketch plan. So the sketch plan required to provide a fifty-foot buffer along Jackson Creek Parkway, which we have in, sorry, along the western boundary, which we've provided, there's also utility easements in that area. And on the east side, we have, there was nothing specific in the sketch plan regarding Jackson Creek Parkway, but we have provided a twenty-five-foot setback along that boundary. And, and then there is, there's not a specific setback requirement on the south side, but we have provided a separation with the property to the north and the, they, if you go back slides, sorry, you can see that there, that area's landscape to provide buffering to the, what, what we don't know what that property will be developed as, but it is owned for commercial, so in anticipation of any commercial development. Next slide. Excellent. So here are some, we had some rendering images of elevations in our semitale packet, but this shows a few more typical building elevations. And this, this is the type of thing, the type of elevation that is anticipated and is very consistent with the other Midtown products. And, and so we have very generalized architectural guidelines on our cover sheet, which basically says that there is an architectural review committee that will review architecture for this property. We get into more detail on architectural review when we're looking at single-family residence, more standard, single-family residential, when different builders may come in and build on different lots. With this, it's all going to be built by classic homes, so pretty much what you see is what, 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 what will be built. So the, and they are the review committee because they control the entirety of Monument Junction and at the moment, the metro district as well. So if you have any comments on the elevations, please tell us now and we can, we can incorporate those comments. But one thing to bear in mind, there are, there are a combination of three-story or I kind of like to call them almost two and a half stories, the, the, the lower, the, as you come in, it's kind of on a lower level. And next slide. So there are different elevations that are proposed and you can see some of them are more modern looking with a flatter roof, some have a more traditional pitched roof. Next slide. Some of them are only two-story, so you know, there's a variety in height, there's a variety in architecture. And that's one of the things the PUD encourages and also your code encourages. It doesn't want the same architecture from one building to another. And so that kind of variation is encouraged. And you can see the front areas of these parcels are landscaped, so this landscaping will be maintained by the metro district. So it's not going to be on the homeowners to maintain, they will be, it's all going to be controlled and maintained as are the open spaces, the trails, the sidewalks and so on. Next slide. Okay, sorry, I apologize for that. So the, the area on their lot, they do are responsible, are responsible for, but the sidewalk, so it's anything from the sidewalk back to, yes. But, but all the tracks and all the landscaping on the tracks are, are maintained by the, the metro district. But everything is zero escaping, it meets the, the plant hardness required by the town's landscape code and the landscape plans have been reviewed by the town's landscape person, I was gonna say, yeah, landscape person, next slide. And here's a few more examples of the, the design. So just talking about consistency with the code, we, we've heard how this is, the entirety of Monument Junction is identified as a mixed-use zone in the, well, not mixed-use zone, a mixed-use area in the comprehensive plan. The PUD zoning and the sketch plan was based on this mixed-use zoning, so it is mixed-use for the entirety of Monument Junction. Obviously, we're just looking today at one portion of that, which is one element of that mixed-use. So we're not trying to achieve a mixed-use on this particular PUD. It is part of the broader mixed-use PUD that has already been approved. The mixed-use was intended to be a combination of non-residential, residential and providing goods and services and, and employment opportunities. So that, that's provided more in, in the context of the commercial development on the northwest side. The rest of the development has always been per the sketch plan and is continued to be predominantly residential. And with that, we are also providing a mix of parks and trails, both on the east side and the west side. We are providing a, a number of parks and, and trails throughout the development. And then there are some, this is single-family detached residential and, and the comprehensive plan has some specific attributes and characteristics. It identifies for these and we, we feel these are some that we comply with. It's appropriate landscaping, usable open space within each neighborhood. I think I've explained how we actually have fairly substantial amount of open space in this neighborhood, both publicly accessible and, and areas more intended for amenities for residents. In addition, we are looking at providing in the entirety of Monument Junction, a mix of densities which allow transitions from the existing larger lots of divisions, which were the areas to the, really to the south and, and the homes of smaller lots. So these are homes on smaller lots, the reason they're on smaller lots is because the amenity space for, for these lots is communal and it's owned and maintained by the metro district. So rather than having larger lots where people maintain their own yards and so on, this is intended to be a smaller lot, which really just encompasses, as you saw, a small yard, front yard area of the home itself and, and the driveway. So very low maintenance, it's what a lot of people are looking for now, both younger people and older people are downsizing, wanting to have less maintenance. So it's, it's very much meeting a market demand and which is also consistent with the goal of the comprehensive plan to provide more, a broader range of housing to, to meet the different sectors of the community. And with that, some other factors that characteristics are identified was connected by sidewalks and trails, which were providing community amenities or encourage, which were providing harmonious variations in facade elevations and types of houses to avoid cut, cut a subdivision. And that's why I showed you some of the examples of the type of architecture that would be on the different lots. So they're not, they're not going to be all the same, they're going to be different, they're quite different in design and colors. So there's really going to be some nice variation there. And of sufficient size to allow for off-street parking and landscaping. So we do have the, as I noted, garages, two-car driveways and a landscaped area that's for the individual lots plus substantial open space. That's meant to be for everyone to enjoy. Next slide. So we just wanted to show this slide, you had the presentation on Jackson Creek Parkway improvements. This, this slide is the ultimate improvements, just showing you how this project connects into that. So the two access, three access points actually that are proposed in this, in this plan have been accommodated in that design and will be providing access to this development in its final condition. I just wanted to touch on something that the town noted regarding the levels of service. You, you've seen a lot about level of service, some of you knew, newer may not know it as much about it, but it is correct, it goes from A to F. A very good analogy I heard about this from the traffic engineer for the city of Colorado Springs is don't think of it like your school grade card, the goal is not to get an A. The most desirable level of service is a level D. Anything less than that, you're starting to have problems. Anything higher than that, the traffic is flowing too freely and will actually more likely to cause accidents because people are driving too fast. So I think that's an important analogy because I think people do tend to think of it, oh, it's like a gray card, we need to be at an A. So when we say a level of service C, that's a good level of service, that's a very functional level of service. In the scenario when it might be getting to an F on, on a left turn lane, that's when we start looking at are there other improvements to make, are there a need, a need for traffic signals and so on? Next slide. So I just want to kind of, it, there are a lot of criteria when you're looking at a combined preliminary and final PUD plan, but some of them are common themed and some of them are identical. So I just wanted to go through some of these things and, and just say. So I just wanted to go through some of these things and just say how we feel we're meeting the criteria. So obviously, the consistency with the comprehensive plan is that it is a mixed-use, we're part of that mixed-use PUD, and we're consistent with what we originally intended with the sketch plan to meet those comprehensive plan policy objectives. There are other policies that we are in conformance with in the sketch plan. Most, the most repetitive ones seem to be related to the desire to have more variety in housing in the town, and this is certainly providing that, because it's a fairly unique product for the town and monument, there's nothing really like it here. So we're providing a different, for a different market. And also infill close to the downtown, so this is an infill site, and it is within a mile approximately of downtown. We've got some quality functional open space with the public park that we're providing, connected by trails, and also providing internal open space and amenity space directed more towards the residents. One of it, one question, is it providing benefit to the town in terms of increasing the variety of developments and providing recreation facilities? So we think we're doing both here, where it was, it's an and/or in the code, but we think we're doing and-and, in that we are providing a variety of development, not only in this Monument Junction area in terms of the mix of different types of residential just in this development, and with the mix of commercial uses. Excuse me. I am also just getting over the cold. The mix of uses in this one development, but when you look more broadly across the whole of the town, that is improving the variety of developments and providing a park on the east side of the highway, which is, which has been requested for many years by existing residents. We are also an integral part of the overall Monument Junction PUD, which I've noticed, and that provides a variety of housing type, style, and density. That's one of the other criteria. Are you actually achieving that? Circulation, I noted that we are, we've talked a lot about the external circulation on Jackson Creek Parkway. I think you've hopefully heard sufficient about that, there's not much point me adding to that, because those projects are under control by the town, they've got it covered, except the funding maybe. But the circulation internally is, like I noted, a public street loop, and then private streets coming off of that, which are designed for safety and convenience, and also provide adequate access for emergency vehicles, and also provide access, not only to the streets and the trails, for bicycles and pedestrians. It fits into the surrounding land use pattern, which is effectively defined by Monument Junction in terms of this particular parcel. The surrounding development is primarily Monument Junction. There is a site to the south, which is proposed commercial, but it provides a good transition to that, and we actually don't know what is planned there. We've heard a couple of different things, so we'll see on that one. But the area has a mix of densities of residential from lower densities on the east side to multifamily and commercial, so it fits in well with that overall pattern of development. And the proposed improvements to the surrounding roads and utilities that have been extended to the site will support the development. Building design, we think it's a quality architectural design. Obviously, any feedback you have, we will take into consideration. It's compatible with the surrounding Monument Junction neighborhood, which has a variety of types of architecture, from more modern architectures to more traditional, and so it will fit in nicely with the style of this overall Monument Junction development. We are proposing landscaping, as shown on the plan, to enhance the site, and we are showing a fairly substantial landscape along the west side, and then landscaping to meet the town's requirement throughout the rest of development. And again, it meets the town's guidelines for plant hardness and zeric design. And then finally, the off-street parking is one of the more detailed requirements, and as I noted, we meet the town's requirement plus extra, significantly extra, it's only two per units required. So we are exceeding that and also providing guest parking. Next slide. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, or sit down and let you ask the town questions.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. At this time, what we're gonna do is, thank you very much for the presentation. And if, at this point, go ahead and like to open this up for public comments, and what we'll do, anybody here have public comment? Sir, come on up, go ahead and sign your name onto the podium.
Shaun Teagan, again, 1515 Bowstring.
Thank you, Shaun.
Thanks for letting me come up and ask a couple of questions.
Sure.
First, the traffic use study was very comprehensive on vehicles. I wonder if there was any consideration given to pedestrians, especially with these, the midtown development being on both sides of Jackson Creek, it being widened and a lot more perhaps traffic, although being slowed. I know that was a comment that was made when they were talking about bringing the speed limit down, but for having trails and parks on both sides, is there any consideration given to pedestrian crossings on Jackson Creek Park?
And we'll give the applicant enough opportunity to answer that for you. Are there any of the questions that you have?
I do have one other question.
Please.
More of a general one for the commission.
Sure.
When it comes to entertaining a request for a PUD, and I read through the request on the monuments documents online, and I saw a will-serv letter from the water district, but I was just curious in general, what sort of consideration does the commission give to additional water drain use, you know, on the community of Monument, and the limitations that we have with a finite amount of water?
That is a great question. I will refer that to staff.
First one on the pedestrian crossings. I do know we were talking about that with the Jackson Creek Parkway design. I'm just not exactly sure where they are. If anywhere, they're gonna be at the signalized intersections, and then as those intersections get added, if we have more lights, they'll go there, but there won't be any random ones with just pedestrian crossings where you see the blinking lights like that. On will-serv letters, we depend on the water departments to tell us, or the water service providers, to determine if they have the sufficient water to do it, and if they provide a will-serv letter. State engineer often weighs in on whether they have enough water or not, so that's what we look at.
Thank you, sir. At this time, Luke, any public comment from the online portion, please, sir?
I don't see anyone raising their hand, so no.
All right, we'll go ahead and give him a minute real quick. Thank you, sir. And did you want to make any comments as to his questions real quick? Yep. We'll go ahead and answer those questions for our applicant, if you would, please.
I would comment first on the pedestrian access, so there will, with the widening of Jackson Creek Parkway, there will be sidewalks on both sides of Jackson Creek Parkway, which there are not right now. So that's going to significantly improve the pedestrian accessibility and connectivity for that area. And the booth is absolutely correct that the crossings will be at the signalized intersection, which is planned for fat tire, and then the southern access when it's warranted, when and if it's warranted. Regarding water, the water service provider here is Woodmore Water and Sanitation District, providing water on sanitary sewer, and yes, they have sufficient waters to pay, to provide the development with water, and the developer has to pay for that, which helps them, it's like a resources fee to help them go and acquire more water as they need it as well.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, we're gonna go ahead and close the public comments, and at this time, open up commissioners' questions and comments. At this time, commissioners, it's open for you to make comments. Please, ma'am.
I have a few questions. My two, I was just getting over the cold. I've had it for a month and a half. I guess.
Please state your name, so we have it for the record, for our new town clerk, Kyle over there. Thank you, Kyle.
And so I understand that this is mixed-use, because we're looking at your entire development for Monument Junction, and this is just a residential component of it. And the PUD sound, they say, you know, the way the PUD works is that kind of you give something extra, more amenities to the town, and the town in return gives you more flexibility. And I understand the flexibility that the town has given you in this plan. The additional amenity that the town is getting from you is the detention area used as a sports field. Is that right? I mean, what's our trade-off here? You're getting some very small lot sizes, and what is the town getting by giving you the flexibility?
I would, I respond to that in two ways. I'm not sure the PUD is set up exactly in that manner, you get more flexibility and we get something returned.
That's what it said in our report.
In what, sorry?
That's what it said in the report.
Okay.
Or in the ordinances.
Okay, so I mean, I've got the ordinance here, and it says that it's to promote creative flexibility in design and permit planned diversification in the location and use of structures, and also that the more efficient use of land. So it's really to encourage more kind of higher density and flexibility and lot sizes and things like that, too. In some instances, it's to preserve natural features, there really aren't any natural features on this site. In terms of what the town is getting, so yes, we're not dedicating a park to the town, but it's gonna be a public park, so we feel that it is gonna be a public park, it is also functioning as a detention facility, but for the vast majority of time, when there is no heavy rain, it will be functioning as a park. So we feel that as a benefit to the town.
Will you be putting in irrigation or doing anything to set up the detention pond so that when it's dry, it can be used as a?
Yes, yes. I mean, it will be a functioning sports field when it's dry, and like I said, there'll be other improvements associated with it, such as a play area and a terrace seating that's also gonna act as retaining walls. And so irrigation, yes, 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 it will be irrigated.
Okay. Yeah. So it's just not gonna be a weedy detention pond?
Yes, it's.
Recreational.
Yeah. Okay. It's going to be maintained in a way that, obviously, a lot of detention ponds, you would see it just like, can become overgrown when they're not maintained, it will be a maintained facility that functions as a park.
Now, the front doors do not face either the alleys or the streets, all the front doors face green spaces?
No, there are some that, there are some that front the public streets. So they all back to the narrower streets, the private streets.
The alley.
Yeah.
I'm gonna call them alleys.
Okay, for now, called miles, but you can see there's, there is the public street that kind of loops around. Some of them are fronting.
Oh, they front those.
They're fronting those, so it's gonna create a kind of an attractive visual as you're driving through the neighborhood of the front doors of these properties, so you're not just looking at garage doors, you're going to be looking at the front doors. But they do have a little separation that provides that yard area, that small area of landscaping in front of the units before you get to the streets, so.
Okay, so these aren't doors, they're gonna be on the sides or?
No.
In the back. And then, okay, this is a silly question, but believe it or not, I once saw a plan that was approved, and there were no back doors. These all have porches or back doors or something that go in back to the green space, is that correct?
So they all have, they all have front doors that front onto the green space, or they access directly into garages at the back.
But they have, you can get into the house from the front or the back on every single one, either go through a garage or you go through a?
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
What is the, what are these side setbacks between the houses?
So the side setbacks are three feet between the houses.
Six feet with two. And are they all gravel?
Yes, they all gravel for drainage, yes.
Okay. 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 Right.
Yeah. So the walls have to be extra fire-rated, at least on one side.
These, no, that's all my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Next, questions?
Commissioner Ragley, I have a few questions for you. I noticed that the bike or walking path that you show or that you mention is only shown as a five-foot width, is that correct?
Yes.
Throughout the project? I think for usability, at least in my opinion, I think we need to reconsider that width and look at it as being closer to eight feet. I mean, if you get a bike and a couple of walkers with dogs, suddenly you're battling over that five-foot width, so just for usability, it doesn't make any sense to me, but that's a comment. Also, is that path paved all the way from the west side of this particular proposal to the north, or is that gonna be a dirt path?
All the trails are going to be concrete.
All of them will be concrete.
It's just easier for maintenance in the long run. It might cost more upfront, but it's better for maintenance.
Clarification on the setback in between the buildings on the sides. Is it three-foot setback from the property line, or three-foot, is it a foot and a half setback from the property line on both sides?
Three foot for me, so it's six foot.
So it'd be a six-foot spacing in between each individual building? The park that's proposed here, is that the only park property that is proposed for the entire Monument Junction mixed-use development?
There is another park on the east side servicing the single-family residential in that area, and a play area as well, and the apartments to the north have their own onsite amenities, so they'll have pool area and so on. So that, but that, for the west side, that is the primary park, yeah.
And the Architectural Control Committee, that's made up entirely of classic personnel?
It is right now, yes, yes.
Right now, is that?
I think it will stay that way, it's possible, I suppose, as the Metro District changes. They would have architectural control, but yeah, so these homes, though, once they're built, will probably stay pretty much as they are.
Okay. So the questions I have for the applicant right now.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Peck, I just kind of have a broad question about the potential need for a traffic light at Slope Side Drive. What are the, this might be for staff, what are the mechanics around the process around deciding that it's necessary and what happens? How does that work?
So as growth keeps continuing, and then you look at the projected, if it's warranted, then we'd have to go back in, and staff would have to look at the funding mechanisms to put in a light. It's not uncommon for that to happen as it goes on. Sometimes you escrow money from people, but they're already doing the parts that are required as part of their development.
So that will not be the requirement of the developer if that light becomes necessary?
Correct.
And I could just add to that, the term warranted has very specific, it's not a subjective thing, it's, there are specific standards, and they usually relate to failing movements, traffic capacity, or safety accidents.
Understood, thank you. And then another question I had is, how many planned design variations do you guys have for this development?
Gentlemen?
Commissioners, I just have one question. From a scalable visualization aspect, how does this one compare to like the one down there by Shields, as far as unit count and et cetera?
That's the farm?
Yeah, what else farm? We had 105 units, sir.
Mr. Leiter, can you state your name for the record, so we have a town clerk can have it?
You good? Please?
They're different, they're, they're different homes. They were the duplexes. They're duplexes on the, on fighting two. So they're an attached, single family product. So they're two, two units attached. These are all detached, so they're a different product. Yeah.
But they're on smaller lots?
Yes.
In fighting two also.
Mm-hmm. Some of them are, yeah.
What was that total sum on to? What was the total sum of lots or facilities that were going in on to? How many?
Hundred, hundred and twenty-nine.
Hundred and twenty-nine, yeah?
Hundred and twenty-nine.
Hundred and twenty-nine on this, on this one. I thought you were asking about the east side. I can't remember.
The east side, yeah.
Oh, sorry, east, east side?
Yep.
You have fifty-eight. Seventy-nine four square and sixty-seven.
Perfect.
At lot six. Their road. What kind of separation is between the apartments? And the road at lot six? And the?
So, so the, the, the vacant area you can see to the north of lot six and the park is, that's the apartments side. That's the south end of the apartment side.
Yeah, those are the apartments.
Yes.
What kind of? Is that open for people to move from the apartments? Into this area?
You mean, is it fenced off? Is it fenced off?
Is it fenced off? Is it free falling?
I think, I believe the apartments had a fence on that. Is there, is there a fence? I, I can't, we can't remember to be honest whether there's a separation, but I thought they had a fence on that south side. Yeah, that, 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 yeah. I mean, they'll have direct access. And you see the trail at the back. So there's direct access between, yeah, between the apartments and the park. There's a trail going all, all the way up that side of the development.
Can you pull up the sketch plan? Now roughly, where are their traffic lights going to be for sure at this point in time?
Well, the sketch plan, it's changed a bit. So there, where that first double arrow is where, roughly where fat tire is, that's where the traffic lights are definitely going in. And then a bit further down, and I would say it's at where the arrow is on the right hand side. There, yeah, about there is where the estimated future, approximate future lights are. But this doesn't really show the current layout. Very well.
But is there, isn't there a stoplight going to be on that south point you just pointed to?
Only as and when it's warranted.
So only, there's only one traffic light right now.
Yes.
Connecting for people to walk from the east side to the west side and the west side to the east side. That's what I was just trying to clarify.
Yeah.
And I think that's what they're showing back there. I got several comments. Commissioner Green asked a question. What's the trade-offs? You can sit down.
Okay.
I'd ask a few more questions than making comments.
So I got a couple of questions before you make comments.
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. All right, so I'm just wrapping my head around. How many apartments, when we built the apartments, obviously the city or the, the town council had said it was approved minus one building. What was the total amount of facilities that were going in there for the apartments?
I believe it's two hundred and twenty-four, two forty, sorry, two forty. Yeah, it's twenty, it's, it was really two sixty-four, you lost twenty-four and it's two forty.
Okay, so two hundred and fourteen units are going in there, a hundred and twenty.
Forty.
Two hundred and forty are going in.
Yeah.
I've got a hundred and twenty-nine going in here. And then in track A, what do I got, a hundred and fifty-nine? On track A. Yes, on A, on your west east side. Fifty-eight total.
Well, on the east side in its entirety, there's two hundred and seventy-eight units. What, what does that add up to?
Correct.
The sketch plan was approved at seven hundred and twenty-four, oh, forty-five, seven hundred and forty-five, and we're currently at five hundred and sixty-five total count.
Perfect. That's, that'll go with that. For five sixty-five, we'll just say that as the number. On this, my question that I'm looking at, I'm looking at the comprehensive plan and on there, you know, it has a very distinct comment. And on that comment, page number seventeen. Says citizens and area residents are mindful that the broader range of housing opportunities is important to the local economy. Many simply do not like the multifamily housing. Our concern, or my concern, is again, here we've got quite a few of these residents that are coming in on a Jackson Creek Parkway that is imminently just coming in, and I understand that. Long term, we're talking still fourth quarter. That's a concern right off the bat. I'm really trying to figure out what is the benefit to the town. And I say that openly because again, behind the scenes, we're bringing in a lot of residents, but with that comes a lot of concern in relation to the police force in the back of the room. To the fire. And again, I'm sure they're saying they can manage it, but what we're finding now is that with the way the world is going now, and I'm looking at it from that perspective. How are we going to manage it as a resident in the state, in the town of Monument? That's my first comment. My other part, or my concern is with the current derailment of trains that have been happening locally, and if we do have a chemical spill, let's say there, or even on Iowa twenty-five, which is a major movement point. Of chemical items that transfer all throughout the continental United States down to the Pueblo Chemical Depot. You have a fifty-foot standoff in case we do have some type of chemical incident. What is your plan or what is Classics' plan? Or is there, has that been looked at in relation to an emergency response for those residents that are potentially going to be living there? No, no. The chemical response, if there is a train wreck on that train, because we've had several of those in the continental United States recently, is that correct?
It will be the same, our answer to that will be the same response as it will be for all the other residents in the town.
Okay, but there is a standoff.
By the, it will be handled by the, a local emergency services.
Okay, but there is a standoff in most of the areas here in Monument. It's just that this is getting closer and closer to the highway. I just want to make sure for the record that we have pointed this out because again, on I twenty-five is a major chemical movement area for the continental United States. Because of all the chemicals that go to Pueblo Chemical Depot. You seem bewildered. I'm just trying to educate you apparently. Okay. I'm just trying to make sure that as the residents of, of the residents of Monument, that we have actually covered all bases of this and actually looked at that because again, being only fifty feet from the highway, that's a concern simply because of the winds that come and push to the east as well. So again, that may be something we might want to take a look at from the town's perspective because we may be putting some individuals in danger there. I, I don't know, something to be concerned with. That would be my only concern, but I guess I, I'm really trying to figure out what's the benefit to the town to put in these here.
Well, it's consistent with the approved sketch plan. And that's already been approved by.
Oh, no, I understand. I just want to get that for the record.
And the point about the comprehensive plan, these are not multifamily residential dwellings to that point. You said that people don't want multifamily. This is not multifamily residential. It's single family detached residential.
At three feet.
And, and individual lots for sale.
Yes, ma'am.
It's not multifamily residential. It's not classed as multifamily residential. And it doesn't function as a, a multifamily residential because it's on individual lots for sale.
Please.
At the actual houses. I mean, we've got the lot information. Yeah, yes, that. Yes, yes, they, they are. Yes, they are sized to accommodate the home, the driveway and a small, that small yard area that was shown in the elevation. So they're not intended to be large lots that have a yard. Because they have the communal open space areas. What if that, if you look at the residential attached zone districts, the, which a town home would be an attached, single family attached. The lot, minimum lot area is one thousand seven hundred and twenty-five square feet, so seventeen hundred and twenty-five square feet for an attached town home. Yes.
Yeah, that's in our code.
Yeah. It's right here, table three forty-four. But I would point out that this isn't a mobile home park. It functions in a different way. These are, these are lots. Yeah, sure.
So we're not trying to do what you're asking. We're not trying to make a single family, typical single family lot like you're thinking about, with a yard. We're very much closer to what you would do a condo map. Except we're not conduing exactly the footprint of the house. We're making it as small as we possibly can so we can make as much common area as we possibly can. And yes, it's not, you may not be enough common area for what you would want to live in, but this is a, this is a popular product for us. And if you haven't seen it in Colorado Springs, it sounds like some people have seen it. I invite you to go look at it. It's a good-looking product and it has good feel when you walk around it. Walking through the open spaces, driving down the roads where you see nothing but fronts of houses, not, not garages, it looks good. It's just not something you're used to seeing. I under, I understand. If you haven't seen it, you're looking at it just as a map. Townhomes. Those are townhomes, yeah. And, and for the density, and for the density that we're approved for, you really can't do a regular standard single family lot on there. It'd be three to the acre. And we're approved for five to twelve. We think we're fitting what we got approved.
But if you took out.
Oh, yes, in a mobile home park, a mobile home space is four thousand square feet.
This is not a mobile home park though. That's why I'd invite you to go look at one of these projects if you're concerned about how it looks.
Can I also point out that the, in terms of the green space amenity areas, so there's that centralized green space, if you could point to it, Luke. That's one point two acres, just to give you some perspective of the size of the community areas. And then you've got all the green space around the edge and particularly on the bottom side. So yes, the, the homes that front the road are a very, very typical type of alley loader product. I lived in one myself in Alexandria, Virginia. It's a, it's, yeah, and it's, and it's, it's a very, it's a very common type of town home type layout development where they face the road or they face green space. So there is. A fairly substantial amount of amenity and green space in this development. And it is intended to serve as a green space oriented community, not a, a community as, as. And, and that's exactly why it's a PUD. And that's exactly why we had the densities on the sketch plan we originally proposed. And we're not even. Yes. No, it doesn't. Can, can you, it, it says it quite, if, it says it quite clearly there. It's seven point six three units per acre excluding the park. With the park, it's five point nine five units per acre. And without the park, it's seven point six three units per acre. The net area is about sixteen and a half acres of the. Nine one one is track C, which is the original area for the development and is a hundred and twenty-nine units. Yes, yeah. That's, that's not. Yes, but you, but it's an acre, that, that's square feet. Fourth, four, three, three, five, six, O's square. But that's not incorporating all the other, that's not how you calculate density. There's, there's streets, there's the open space. So there are a hundred and twenty-nine lots on sixteen point nine acres. That's how you calculate the density. And we are at the lower end of the five to twelve unit per acre range that was allowed on the sketch plan. Yes, because it's five to twelve. And if you, if you actually, seven point six. That's the net density without the park. Call it what you will, it is a park and a detention pond combined. It will function as a park for the majority of the time.
Please.
So two points or two clarifying questions. On the detention pond slash park, is there additional size that you have included to this detention pond slash park to make it such?
Absolutely, yes.
What, what, above what's required for this, for the lot size, how much have you added to it?
We, we accommodated most of it by adding the canning walls on the east side and pushing the whole bottom of the park, of the, of the pond space at the bottom, the detention area. All the way to the east. There's a trickle channel, a little bit of a drop on the far west side. So just regular nuisance water, regular storm will run. On that far west side and not run through the play area. But in a big event, it will flood the play area. This is not a new concept. This is something that a lot of desert communities do, Phoenix in particular, almost all of their detention ponds are a park.
I think it's an interesting concept. I'm just, I'm, I'm curious, what's the additional size that you've created to that usable space for residents?
Well, they wouldn't have been able to use any of the bottom of the, of the pond.
But if, if it was just a detention pond there, if it was not usable?
We, we, we would have just continued the slope flowing from the, the size is the same. We changed it by moving the retaining, putting retaining walls to make the bottom flat.
Okay.
And then also, I know you're saying that the town doesn't get anything. It's just a detention pond. The district's putting, we're putting it in and the district's maintaining it. The city's going to get a, town's going to get a park that they can use and they don't have to pay for any of it. They don't have to pay to maintain it or anything. So there's a benefit there. The other benefit of having more units is your sales tax, e-commerce sales tax is a real thing these days and it's fifty percent of purchases. That's more sales tax revenue for the town. So I know there's all this downside of having additional units, but we are also trying to meet as affordably as we can. We can't build five thousand and ten thousand square foot lots and be anywhere close to affordable. At least this is our attempt to try to make something more affordable for town.
So on the question of attainable or affordable housing, you're, so this is, is this pretty much a, an analog to your product down south? Is this very similar? The square footage. The, the square footage, um, size of the houses that are going to be sold? You have, you have product like this down south, right?
In, in Colorado Springs?
Yeah.
Yes, we have some projects in Colorado Springs of this product.
Okay, and so in today's dollars, what are those selling for each unit?
Around five, five and a quarter.
Okay, so that's, that's how we're defining right now attainable.
Yeah, and Monument is probably going to be, you're probably going to be five fifty because your top fees are higher, all your other fees are higher up here.
Understood, thank you.
And I put that in the context of, uh, the average home price here is in the seven hundred and fifty region. It was slightly more, um, this time last year. Um, but it's, it's significantly higher than other parts of the region.
Thank you, sir. Uh, any more questions or comments, gentlemen? Ma'am?
Mr. Chairman, I had a couple of, uh, questions that I can direct the town staff if that's all right.
And please remember to announce your name when you.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is Commissioner Eggly. I apologize. Um, I appreciate and respect, uh, what the applicant said about the fire department and, and their, um, response to the buildings. But can you give us some idea of what, uh, the fire department had to, had to say about this particular proposal?
Yeah, we did review it. We had a little hiccup at one point where there was a misinterpretation of the code. Um, applicants went back and offset the one intersection to meet their separation. So, um, the fire department didn't look at it. We looked at the fire hydrant separation. There was a lot of, um, involvement with them.
I think I, uh, posed this question via email the other day, but, uh, don't we have an ordinance within the town on, on the percentage of the lot that has to be, that can be covered by the home? And the percentage of the lot that has to be, uh, free flowing space?
We do not have lot coverage percentages on any residential within our code.
None at all.
All of that, so lot coverage, and we'll get into this later, but lot coverage addresses commercial, office, retail, in, industrial uses. Your side setbacks, your, all your setbacks. Um, those essentially build your buildable envelope on the residential lot. And that essentially defines your lot coverage that way. That along with, uh, whatever access is needed and parking needed for the two vehicles, three vehicles, whatever is defined by code. Um, that needs to be accommodated for as far as a parking space or a stall.
That, that, that leads to my next question. And what are setbacks for residential though?
They vary depending on which residential area you're, you're dealing with. This is a PUD. The PUD is able to write its own code for what those setbacks are. Um, the setbacks for this particular PD, I, I'm not well enough first in the PD to speak to it at this second. Uh, I welcome the applicant to speak up to that if they'd like to about what the current setbacks are for front, rear, inside.
And we can jump in on, like with single family and RA. So I would, I would put this closer to your residential attached zone district. But if you look at front yard setbacks, they go from ten to twenty-five, I believe. I'm going off the top of my head. I know we have it in another slide later, but it's ten to twenty-five for a front, um, zero to five for a side. And I want to think it's zero to ten for the rear typically in those lots. But they, the, the five is usually on a standard, single family because you have the ten-foot separation for fire. In this case, they're doing the three, but they're doing the firewalls. I, I don't remember the front and the others on those.
That's right, yeah, I think I saw your slides that we'll be taking a look at a little bit later on. Yeah, that's all the questions I had for right now.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen? None? Danny?
Commissioner Oars. Uh, first I need the applicant to, uh, help me clarify my research. You said there's five hundred and sixty-five units is what you have approved right now? For the whole. Pardon me? Including this. Okay, I've got six hundred and fourteen already without this, so help me where I'm wrong. Monument Junction Phase One, you have two hundred and four. Monument Junction West Lot Five, you have two hundred and sixty-four. Pardon me? Two hundred and forty, okay? Okay. And Monument Junction East filing two, a hundred and forty-six.
The two hundred and four includes everything on the east side.
What?
The two hundred and four is everything on the east side.
The two hundred and four is just in Phase One?
No. Phase one is made up of filing one and two. Filing one is fifty-eight. Filing two is seventy-nine plus sixty-seven.
We have only two filings, filing one and filing two.
So on the east side.
You say there's only fifty-eight homes. Yeah, you're, you're going to have to help me here.
Can you? Can you bring up a map, please? Uh, let, go backwards and we'll see if we can find one. Yeah, the site location, go right back. Okay, so on the east side, Monument Junction Phase One is made up of two, two filings. The first filing is the southern portion, so up to about where, not even where, where Knollwood was or to south there.
Knollwood and South Side are kind of that fighting point.
Yeah, so. So on the south side of that, there were fifty-eight single-family lots. So that's where we had the lower density. So there are bigger lots on the south side going to slightly smaller, single-family lots. So that was fifty-eight. And the northern section of, uh, Phase One were the four-square and the duplexes we talked about, and they total a hundred and forty-six. So in total, on the east side of Jackson Creek Parkway in Monument Junction, there are two hundred and four units. The apartments are two hundred and forty on Lot Five as approved by the town. And here we have a hundred and twenty-nine. That gets us to, based on what I just calculated, I think it was five hundred and, oh, now I'm getting two, two hundred and four plus two forty plus one two nine equals five seventy-three. So in.
Five twenty-three is what you've got right now.
Seventy-three, five hundred seventy-three in total residential in this entire development. Compared to the seven hundred and forty-five that was approved on the sketch plan.
And right now you have how many approved?
All except this one hundred and twenty-nine, so.
Four hundred and forty-four.
Four hundred and forty-four.
Okay.
And I point out that the traffic study that was prepared for the sketch plan and all the design and everything that's been proposed on Jackson Creek Parkway was on the assumption of the seven hundred and forty-five that was on the sketch plan.
Okay, so I did get one thing right. Filing two is a hundred and forty-six.
Yeah.
All right, so. One out of three, one out of three ain't bad, is it? Okay, having got that clarified. Commissioner Green asked what the trade-offs are. Commissioner Eggly, you ask about lots. Coverage, and I, I would assume you were asking about where do we get some commercial and some some retail? Um, and so I have a lot of problems with this site, just as I had problems with Lot Five. And so I'll go through my, my comments. And then, uh, at the appropriate time, if given the opportunity, I'll make a motion to deny this and I'll tell you why. I confirmed with the planning department that the applicant has acknowledged that by presenting us both a preliminary and a final PUD uh, for approval, that the applicant understands that if it does not meet the preliminary PUD requirements, it can in fact be disapproved on the final, even though you've put all this work into putting together a final presentation. Is that correct? I'd also point out, if you pull up the sketch plan. There's talk about the sketch plan apparently alluding to it being a holy grail, but it's not because, uh, this sketch plan was approved in twenty twenty. And then on October seventeenth of twenty twenty-two, the owner made the decision to change the sketch plan to move the commercial area and to move the apartments into where the commercial area was and to move commercial north, which means changes can be made to sketch plans. And having said that, I will, I'm going to be requesting that the planning commission request the council to change the Monument Junction West Side tracks A, B, and C, which are now the midtown collection, to a mixed-use, commercial, retail. And this showing is residential on the sketch plan. Because changes can be made to sketch plans. I think it's important to note that sketch plans are just what they are. They're an idea of what an owner wants to do. But when it comes time to final plans, sometimes those plans change and sometimes the community's needs change. And this whole development, eighty, almost eighty-four acres, is primarily nothing more than residential and little to no commercial or retail, which is needed in this community. Now, I got my numbers wrong on some of the residential, but let me tell you. Then in addition to the homes that are already in this development, there are approximately eight hundred and sixty-four more single-family homes, apartments and multifamily homes that have been approved subsequent to this sketch plan being approved. And therefore, there's more commercial and real, uh, retail needed in our community at this time to serve the best interest of the community. And that is exactly what the comprehensive plan calls for. In fact, the comprehensive plan says that a mixture of non-residential and residential development that provides convenience, goods, services, and employment opportunity for area residents. Mixed-use development should promote work, live, and play with residential use being subordinate to non-residential use. LE, L U E capitalize on the three I twenty-five interchanges for destination sales tax-producing land use. Encourage highway orientation business to locate in the mixed-use and define community centers and shared access. Allow for a wider array of land use types to meet the changing community needs. And PUD must adequately address the following criteria in a manner to be consistent with public health, safety, and welfare. This development is approximately, I think, with regard to acreage, I've got it approximately right. Approximately sixty-two to sixty-four acres of eighty-four acres is devoted to residential. That doesn't make residential subordinate to non-residential. There's a greater need for commercial on the Jackson Creek Parkway. And when we talk about the applicant talked about, uh, taxes. Well, for family housing, the tax base is seven point nine percent. And for commercial, real and, uh, retail, it's twenty-nine percent. So if we're interested in taxes, and that's one of the things, that's. Yeah, well, that's fine. It's still not going to hit twenty-nine percent. Um, and again, that's what the, the, um, comprehensive plan, uh, requests that, uh, that there's financial interest also for the community. So, um, I find this to, uh, to be, uh, something that needs to be changed, uh, to commercial, uh, retail, and hopefully, uh, if I get to make the motion and hopefully if it's approved, that the council will do that. Uh, and, and I would, I would make this comment. Classic Homes has done a marvelous job of providing housing for this community. In fact, if you would have promoted, promoted this type of housing when you chose to put in apartments that this community didn't want, you would have better served this community. But this development is not serving the community. And if I have anything to say, and if the motion passes, I'm hoping that the commission, the council will agree with that.
That's all I got. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I add one point.
Please, ma'am.
We will have to have attorney review, but this may not be something that council can just amend the sketch plan. Um, this might require more than that, or they may not be able to do it at all because of, um, the way it was adopted as an ordinance. Um, so I don't believe the council can just make that amendment. There are minor amendments that can be done, but land use change like that is not one.
So what, what would that do?
If, if it had been done by a resolution, there might be an option, an, an, an opportunity, but this was done by ordinance. And ordinance can only be changed by another ordinance. And because it was a land use, I believe it's a vested right. I'm not an attorney, but just based on my experience, but we would have to have the attorney look into if, if the council wanted to do that, could they? And I don't think they can.
So what I'm hearing you say, I can still, if, I can still make a motion.
Yes.
Uh, the commission can decide whether they want to approve or disapprove the commit, motion. The motion can be sent then to the council. Council can then look at it and then make a decision how deep they want to get into things.
Yes, and part of our due diligence will be to go through the town attorney prior to that, so that the attorney can advise them on what they can and can't do.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments on the commissions? At this time, what I'd like to do is we need to make a motion to vote on the specific wording of the motion. My question to staff is, I'm looking at two items here. I'm looking at the PUD and then I'm looking at the final, is that correct? So I'm making two motions associated with this, this package.
Yes, you would have to make two motions regardless if you approve or deny.
Okay.
And you have to be very clear in the criteria that you identify that they don't meet on both.
Okay. So the first motion that we're going to be talking about, uh, at this time, we closed the commissioner comments. The first motion is regarding the.
PUD.
Mid-down, yes, midtown collection at Monument Junction filing west, preliminary slash final PUD. Correct? That is the first motion. So do I have a motion for approval, denial, or continuance on the Monument Junction West filing number one, preliminary slash final PUD?
Collins moves that the planning commission recommend approval of the midtown collection at Monument Junction West filing number one, preliminary slash final PUD. Based on the findings that pose preliminary slash final PUD is in conformance with the review and approval criteria as outlined in the Town of Monuments Land Development Code sections. Eighteen point oh three point four fifty and eighteen point oh three point four six zero.
Zernico second.
Excuse me, excuse me, can you repeat that again?
Commissioner Zernico second.
Okay, thank you.
And Kyle, go ahead and do a roll call, please, sir.
Okay. You know, okay. Chairperson Trejo.
I say no due to the fact on the final review criteria eighteen point three point four five zero preliminary P U D section C five. The project provides a benefit to the town such as increasing variety of development. Fills a need and or provides amenity to the benefits of the town residents. It provides a need to the overall state residence, however, no need to the residents within the town of Monument. With a housing cost of five hundred and thirty-five as mentioned by the applicant for the average house at thirteen hundred square or to twenty, thirteen hundred to two thousand, I think you mentioned. Square feet, there's no justified value to the town residents and that is my comment associated with that statement. I thank you for my denial in that approval.
Vice Chair hours?
No.
You don't necessarily, if you're just voting no on an approval, it's only if you're making a motion on.
Commissioner Peck?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Egley?
No.
Commissioner Green?
No, and I will say that I am voting no because I simply do not believe this meets the intent. Of the land unit development zone.
Commissioner Zernico?
Yes.
Give us a status on the votes, please.
Vote. Four to three, not in favor, opposed.
Thank you, sir. The next motion that we're going to have to have on this will be on the second half of this. And the second half will be on a request by Classic Homes for the final plat known as Midtown, Midtown Collection. At Monument Junction West filing number one on the two point seven acres. Yeah, do we have a motion at this time?
Point of order. Sir, can we not make another motion?
Well, that's what I was just saying as a port of order, since the first motion did not pass, you have to make a second motion to either deny, continue or approve with conditions.
Say that one more time, I just want to make sure I got this.
The first motion did not pass. Therefore, no action has been taken. So you either do another motion to approve with conditions, a denial, a continuance.
Perfect.
Yeah.
So at this time.
I'm, I'm going to make a question first.
Please.
Based on what. The director told us with regard to why this. Council may not be able to. Act on a negative motion. That I was about to make. Would it possibly be in order to table this until we could get a legal? Definition?
I think you can still include, if you want to include your request that the council amend the sketch plan. You can put that in your motion because you are only a recommending body. And there, when we go to council, your recommendation is included. And then the town attorney will give them guidance as to can they do that? Can they not do that or can they do it within the limitations that he sets for them? So I would say if you're going to make that motion, go ahead and make it. The timing isn't going to change.
Okay, good, all right, I have a motion. Commissioner hours. I move the planning commission recommended now the Midtown Collection at Monument Junction West filing number one preliminary filing P U D. Because it fails to meet the following criteria from the Town of Monuments Land Development Code Sections eighteen point oh three point four five oh. And eighteen point oh three point four six oh. And. I copy this, does eighteen point oh three point five oh also apply in? That's my motion. And. Specifically. Uh, see the criteria for review, the preliminary P U D must adequately address the following criteria in a manner consistent with the general. Public's interest, health, safety and welfare. Number five, the project provides a benefit to the town such as increasing the variety of development to fill a need and provide. Amenities for the benefit of the town's residents. And thirteen, the plan is consistent with town's comprehensive plan. Within the comprehensive plan, page thirty-three of sixty-four, chapter four, future land use and annexation plan, last paragraph in bold print. As new development proposals are submitted, it's critically important. To maintain a balance between residential and non-residential use to maintain the overall fiscal health of the community. Non-residential use. Uses have a property taxation rate of twenty-nine percent and the added benefit of potential sales tax and real property tax revenue versus seven point nine percent, six percent. Tax rate for residential. Page forty-two of sixty-four at mixed uses, which includes planned unit development types. A mixture of non-residential and residential development that provides convenience. Goods, services and employment opportunities for area residents. Mixed use. Note, this also includes P U D's development should promote work, live and play and with residential use being subordinate to the non-residential use. Page fifty of sixty-four under opportunities, L E dash E, L U dash E capitalize on the three I twenty-five interchanges for destination sales tax producing land use. L U dash G encourage highway oriented businesses to locate in the mixed use and define community centers with shared access. Page fifty-one of sixty-four policies. L U dash three allow for a wider array of land use types to meet the changing community needs. And D criteria for review. The final P U D must adequately address the following criteria. In a manner consistent with public health, safety and welfare. Item one, the final P U D conforms to or is consistent with the preliminary P U D.
And you will share that with us. And you will share that document with us, thank you.
I second the motion, Commissioner Trejo.
Commission, Chairperson Trejo.
Uh, what am I saying, yes or no? Yes, I deny the actual application at this.
Okay. Vice Chair hours?
Yes.
Commissioner Peck?
No.
Commissioner Collins?
No.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioners, Zernaki, I'm sorry, I apologize. Zernico.
No.
Commissioner Egley?
Yes.
Motion passes four to three.
Thank you, Cal.
You're welcome.
I'd like to, if I could. Read a rationale for the denial to. To send to the. Commission. However. I'm going to have to make some modifications because I. Didn't do my math well on the housing, so. If you just give me a second to, to look at what I've, I've done.
If I can request, we take a five minute recess, right now it is eight twenty, so we'll come back at eight thirty. We spent quite a bit of time, if I can request for a recess.
Yes, and I would suggest reading it after you do the final plat because it probably will apply to both, correct? Miss Commissioner Al?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I would say, I would suggest making a motion on the final plat before you read your statement.
All right, we're going to go ahead and take a ten minute break, we'll be back at eight thirty, thank you, folks. Don't want to know.
Please, no, I'll get that before you come in. Yeah, I'm discussing. What are they actually?
Yeah, they're in there.
That's pretty, pretty ironic, you guys are both drinking Fresca.
Yeah. Nothing here.
I need to get you a different hat, you're going to walk in here wearing a cat.
It's Wagner, I, I.
Danny, you need something to drink, you good?
Yeah. Have they got water there?
Yeah, I'm sorry, it wasn't water.
That's all right. Well, we got Diet Coke.
I'll take one.
No, they got.
I would have brought my other backpack, I would have had one.
No, I'll pass.
I would have brought my other backpack, I would have had one.
But we got a trade, I only give hats to people that give you theirs, so. Zero or something.
Just to throw the fireplace. I think that's Diet Coke, yep, there you go, thank you, sir, I got you on this.
Thank you.
All right. Well. I got my floodlights in for my Christmas lights, that's a good thing. Oh, I do, yeah, I go freaking straight up. What do you call it, the Griswolds? Dancing music, all the other stuff, yes. Do you like jellyfish or something? Uh, Lightarama. Okay. Yeah. I did, uh, I put up. Yeah, the jellyfish are, are like that, right with the. Yeah. Yep, the LEDs. Mine aren't quite as commercialized. Brightness as them. What the heck is the name of it? I know what I, did you, the guy, there you go, yep, I know exactly. Guy was a. He's a police officer, I think that owns that, that site. Yeah. He does. There's a guy, I want to say it's Trimlight, it's not Trimlight, there's another one, it's not Jellyfish. But. You're talking about Ninja something, because I know he's a, he's former. Yeah, but he does all the PD lights for the state. So in the, the. The undercover cars, you know, you'll see an old like nineteen seventy-six frigging truck and. You wouldn't expect it, you know, it's tinted windows and everything and that thing is souped up to the hills and then they throw the lights on, you're like, holy moly. Yeah, I was like, hmm, interesting, let's take a look at this one, I was like.
Yep, okay. Oh, yeah, I got that, okay.
Okay, question for you, real quick. So now my question is, as I go back, we done the preliminary, we made the motion. With the motion on the preliminary that now is complete. We have to also now make a motion on the final.
Yes, and now your only option is to deny it because the plat as it is today.
Correct.
Doesn't match.
That's correct, yep, that's what I wanted to make sure.
My motion is to deny the plat.
Yeah, and I've got, I've got that.
Yes, your criteria may have changed because. The plat as drawn was matching the building as exposed. Now the plat as drawn has to match existing and it doesn't.
It doesn't.
Whereas before it did match, now it doesn't, so your criteria is that it. It doesn't match the, whatever, whatever that criteria is about matching, meeting all criteria.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, Danny's got it all written.
I got a motion, I think I got it right.
Yeah, I think. For, for the final.
For the final.
Yes, that's correct, yeah.
Yeah, so this one it has to be though, because it does not meet.
Does not meet the requirements, yes, ma'am.
Sheila, why is it? Why is it assumed that if you're the developer, you have the given right to always do the high end?
I appreciate it. I, I keep tipping up, I know what I'm working.
So.
You still not here? I said, we still got here?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
We're gonna reconvene a little early, two minutes early. It's eight twenty-eight here, the Planning Commission here in the Town of Monument. At this time, we do have to continue on. We have to make a motion for the final plat, as we've already made a motion for the PUD that has been denied, that was been read by the town clerk, our esteemed Kyle Anderson on the far side. Thank you, sir. At this point, what I'd like to do is get a motion for the final plats. At this time, on the council, do we have a motion?
Commissioner Hours, I have a motion. I move that the Planning Commission recommend denial the Midtown Collection at Monument Junction West filing number one final plat because it fails to meet the following criteria from the Town of Monuments Land Development Code Section eighteen point oh-two point two-six-oh. Then I, I, I make these comments thereafter before I cite the Midtown Collection at Monument Junction West filing number one. Final plat describes it as consisting of one four-point-eight acre tract for community park and drainage and a hundred and twenty-nine single-family residential lots. This description of the plat conflicts with the Planning Commission's related requests for the council to deny the Midtown Collection PUD for a hundred and twenty-nine single-family units, which would be located on the plat. Therefore, C, review and approval criteria. A final plat shall comply with the following review and approval criteria. Two, the plat proposes a harmonious development and lot pattern that is compatible with the neighborhood and community. Five, adequate, safe, and efficient public improvements, utilities, and community facilities and services will be provided with sufficient capacity to serve the subdivision.
Hi, Commissioner Trujillo, go ahead and second the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Chairperson Trujillo?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Hours?
Yes.
Commissioner Peck?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Egley?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Zornico?
Yes.
Zernico, sorry. In favor of the motion, all seven, seven in favor.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Co. On this one here, next item.
Could I read the rationale now, please, for the denial? And then I'll send it to you. First, before I read the rationale, I want, I, I wanna say to the commissioners that voted no and that were in favor, that's fine. And, and you might wonder, why is this guy always complaining about residential? One of the things that I find is very important for this commission is that we look very hard at the comprehensive plan. The Planning Department looks at the comprehensive plan. But the Planning Department does not use the latitude, nor do they want the latitude to go into some of the detail that the citizens have asked us to consider when we're looking at developments. And that's one of the big reasons we set here between the Planning Department and the council. And I look very hard at the comprehensive plan. And this development as a whole, that set aside the fact that there was nothing wrong with what they presented, that they wanted to build, but when they're building it in the total development, it is certainly, this development is out of whack with what the comprehensive, what the citizens wanted. Now, the rationale for denial. The applicant has acknowledged to the Planning Department an understanding that when preliminary and final PUDs are submitted jointly for review and approval, that the final PUD can be disapproved if it fails to meet the requirements of the preliminary PUD. The PUD zoning and sketch PD, PD plan for the property tracks A, B, and C, knowing his Midtown Collection was approved on June fifteen, twenty-twenty. On October seventeen, twenty-twenty-two, the owner submitted and received approval on the west file side filing number one for a PUD on Lot Five, which substantially changed the location of the sketch plans, commercial retail facilities. Now, the Planning Commission is requesting the council to change the Monument Junction West Side Track A, B, and C Midtown Collection to mixed-use commercial retail. It is shown as residential on the sketch plan. The council denying another hundred and thirty-five residential units on approximately sixteen acres will be consistent with the comprehensive plan, which asks that the developments residential be subordinate to the non-residential. All total, Monument Junction has approved to, has been approved to construct four hundred and forty-eight residential units on approximately sixty-four acres of a total eighty-three-point-nine-seven acre development. Monument Junction Phase One, PUD on the east side was approved March twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two. Monument Junction West Lot Five, PUD was approved October seventeen, twenty-twenty-two. Monument Junction East filing two was approved November twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two. Additionally, PUDs for eight hundred and sixty-four more new single-family, multifamily, and apartments have been approved by the Board of Trustees since May twenty-twenty-one on the Jackson Creek Parkway, which is subsequent to the Monument Junction Sketch Plan approval. Monument Junction Phase One, east side. Village at Jackson Creek Apartments, west side, Jackson Creek North filing east side. Today, there's a greater need for commercial retail development on Jackson Creek Parkway. The comprehensive plan states it is critically important to maintain a balance between residential and non-residential use to maintain the overall fiscal health of the community. Non-residential tax rates of twenty-nine percent and the added benefit of potential sales tax and real property tax versus seven-point-nine-six percent property tax rate for residential. Comprehensive plan, new developments should be a mixture of non-residential and residential development that provides convenience, goods, services, and employment opportunities for area residents. End of comments.
Thank you, sir. Comments are complete. At this time, we're gonna go ahead and continue on. At this point, we have a request to update the definition of lot coverage in Title eighteen Land Development Code of the Monument Municipal Code. Uh, Jeff, you'll be presenting that, I assume, sir?
Yes.
Thank you, please.
Thank you, Chair Trujillo. Will now present a ordinance requesting a change to the definition for lot coverage in the Town Land, Town Land Development Code. Uh, just some background. So in July of twenty-twenty-one, Land Development Code was updated. In that, they, there was a consolidation of all land use regulations into one document for ease of reference. This includes everything from zoning, subdivision, sign, and other related code provisions. Uh, in doing that consolidation, we as staff and the applicants that we work with have worked with the code. The new code and noticeable issues have been identified. Uh, this is the first, just to let you know, this will be the first in the several updates that staff anticipates presenting to you, uh, over the following, uh, months. Uh, further background, uh, prior to that July twenty-twenty-one Land Development Code update, lot coverage was generally included in the percentage of land that would be covered by a building footprint. That was the general understanding. Uh, the definition of lot coverage changed, uh, with the update to the zoning code to include impervious surfaces. In other words, the definition being lot coverage means the amount or percent of impervious coverage, including the surface parking and the building footprint. So.
I'm sorry, surface parking, even if it's gravel or does it have to be?
It's about impervious surface.
Well, that's, some argue that gravel is still impervious.
Because of compaction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. Uh, I would, would want, not want to dive into our code as it currently is written to see if there's even a nuanced understanding of that. I doubt that that exists. Uh, the ordinance amending, so our request tonight is an ordinance amending the Title eighteen of the code to change the definition of lot coverage to the percentage of the lot area that may cup, be covered by all of the footprints of the buildings and structures on a lot, including detached garages, carports, sheds, gazebos, covered patios, and decks. So what's the research that substantiates this? We looked at adjacent jurisdictions. Basically, we were looked at commercial retail office and industrial uses. As we explained earlier in this evening, that's how lot coverage is typically applied, is to those zoning districts as opposed to residential. We looked at our, our neighboring communities of El Paso County, Fountain, and Colorado Springs to see what they do. They have different definitions, they have different percentages, and they have different approaches that are used for lot coverage, building footprint, and impervious surface. I break them all three out because in those different codes, they all have different definitions. In our code, we've lumped everything into one thing, which is lot coverage. So it, it has implications by doing so. The note below is to reference, uh, how residential is different and how it's looked at in terms of lot coverage as opposed to commercial retail office and industrial. Our findings and the outcome. So the consistency among the other jurisdictions and the difference to Monument, building footprint coverage, paving, and other impervious surfaces are distinctly separated out in required calculations. Uh, allowed percentages for overall imperviousness and maximums are much higher, uh, if not double of what is occurring in Monument per the current lot coverage definition. So this discrepancy in approach for Monument is, it's essentially negatively impacting our partnering development community from effectively planning, designing, and building successful developments for us for the future of the Town of Monument. So let's take it a little bit step further now, and let's give ourselves an example so we can understand what we're really talking about. Very typical in what I see in code and in PUDs that I, that come over my desk that have been approved in this town, maximum lot coverage equals forty percent. And that's all that the PUD will say. That leads us to have to understand, well, what does lot coverage mean, which lends us to go back to the code and read what that definition is. So now it's a question of what happens when the definition changes. So in our jurisdictions neighboring us, if a lot coverage equals building footprint only, what, what, what's the play out? Sixty percent then of that lot can be accommodated for parking, circulation, landscaping, and open space. How does that break down a little bit further? My general knowledge, landscaping typically is about fifteen percent of a typical development, which leaves you forty-five percent then of that lot, okay, forty-five percent, that's addressing parking and the circulation necessary to get to that parking on a commercial, industrial, or, um, office, retail-based use. If we change that lot coverage to mean what we have currently in our code, meaning building footprint and impervious surfaces are part of lot coverage, now we leave sixty percent of that lot being for landscaping and open space only. The implication is that the landowner and the developer may be limited to less than half of their available land that they've purchased uh, to do what they're planning to do. With the current definition of lot coverage, lot coverage, just to repeat, to clarify, lot coverage means the amount or percent of impervious coverage, including the surface parking and the building footprint. Result, larger parcels of land feel less of an impact. So in our town currently, we have parcels of land out there that are twenty-six acres, what have you, twenty, sixty, fifty acres of land. And there's one lot. This code with the lot covers the way it plays out doesn't impact that so much. But once you get into subdivided platted lots that are getting into commercial pad sites, one to three acres, the smaller commercial pad site then is likely rendered useless for commercial purposes if you go with a lot coverage definition that says that it covers the building and all your impervious surface. It cannot, and once you apply that alone, you cannot meet any of the other development standards after that. So with that explanation, staff then, we recommend that we update the definition lot coverage. And the simplest is the most effective way is to just resolve, to resolve the issue is the definition. Existing lot coverage percentages can implement with a simple definition update. If the Planning Commission agrees, staff will move forward with an ordinance requesting a revision to the Town of Monument Code Section eighteen oh-seven-one-one-zero, words and terms revising the term of lot coverage to say this, the percentage of the lot area that may be covered by all the footprints of the buildings and structures on a lot, including detached garages, carports, sheds, gazebos, covered patios, and decks.
Can I add one quick thing? Overall, what we think happened is that when they updated the code, they left the lot percentages low and then changed the definition, instead of changing the definition and then increasing the lot coverages. So instead of making us go back and relook at all the percentages and come back to you with a bunch of, it, it would just be easier to change the definition. And then when we update the code in two years after we update the comp plan, we can revisit the percentages again then if we find that they're an issue. But based on what Jeff, our look at what has already been previously approved, the percentages have been the same for years. It's just the definition changed and really impacted, um, development at this point. Now, it hasn't impacted PUDs again, cause you can modify your terms there, but it's all those straight zones.
It can, and it has impacted PUDs that have, as I said, there are PUDs that were built, actually, they were planned developments, right? We have PUDs now, before the code update, we had PUDs. In those PUDs, as they are recorded, they'll say something like, the development standard is lot coverage equals forty percent. That's based off of an understanding of lot coverage definition from the previous code. So now they're, they're tied into situations where they aren't able to go through a review and get approved because of that change in the lot coverage definition. Do we spin your heads too much?
Well, at this time, thank you for the presentation, sir.
Yeah, you bet.
Kyle, do we have anybody, or correction, Luke, do we have anybody online? First off, let me open up public.
regarding the individual definition of lot coverage in Title eighteen of the Land Development Code for the town of Monument.
Commissioner Green, I will move that staff proceed with making changes in Chapter eighteen of the code regarding lot coverage, as stated in the presentation.
Do you want her to read the full approval, or?
Kind of work.
Okay, and do we got a second? Do we got a second?
Commissioner Egley, I'll second that motion.
Kyle, if you can get a roll call, please, sir.
Chairperson Trujillo?
Trujillo, yes, sir.
Trujillo.
Thank you, Chris.
I'm gonna call Chris, okay. Vice Chair Ours?
Yes.
Commissioner Peck?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Egley?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Zernico?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of seven, two zero.
Thank you, sir. Next item is the non-agenda public items, this is for land development, develop, land development only. Do we have any non-agenda public items inside or on the, on the commission? And there are none. Any reports, communications, or announcements from the commissioners? One, Commissioner Green?
I wanted to congratulate Jeff and say that that presentation was really nice to not do it at all. I appreciate it.
Oh, thank you, appreciate that. Glad to be of service.
Any other comments, questions, pronouncements, Danny?
Commissioner Ours, have we heard any more from the annexation folks as to whether they're gonna ever come back and?
Yes. They submitted, they're an official submittal now, they are out for referral, so should be coming to you this summer. You may or may not like what they have to present, but it's very similar to what it was before.
But at least they're coming back.
Perfect. All right. Planning staff, any reports, communications, or announcements?
What?
Any reports, communications, or announcements?
So, we tried to remember everything from our works session, including in this packet, so at the end of the packet, you would have seen current projects, and then the handout that we gave you are pre-application meetings. So these are meetings that we've had with people that aren't official applications yet, but we've met with them. We're just giving them general information, so we're not gonna read any of these ever, but if you ever have a question about them at the end of the meeting, just bring them up then. I was telling Commissioner, Chair Trujillo, that we were looking at Jeff, Jeff had a great idea of, on the presentations, when he's going through like wildlife, land use, whatever, he would put at the very bottom of the slide the criteria it relates to, and that it addresses that, to kind of just reinforce the criteria that it meets. So if you have any other ideas or things like that, we will do them, but I think Jeff did a great job on the Jeff Show tonight, and Luke did a great job, all three of these guys did a great job, so I just wanted to say thanks. Yeah.
Thank you all. Yeah, appreciate all you do. The only other addition to that would be, if you would on the slides, put a slide number, so we can go back and refer directly to that.
Yeah.
Okay? Or some type of numerical identification, so we can go ahead and pull that back. But other than that, thank you very much, you guys are awesome, and we appreciate everything you do, and with that.
I have, I have something else, yeah. So I'm trying to get the website completely up to date for current projects, including all submittals for projects, I think previous staff might have fallen behind on that, but I've been uploading like every day, at least one or two projects to documents on demand, so that when you click the link on current development projects on our website, it'll go directly to that, and then also, older projects are on there as well, but they're not directly on our website. I'm also trying to create a map of current development projects, just to help you guys out in the general public on where development is happening around town.
Perfect, thank you very much, Luke. At this time, I just need adjourn, motion to adjourn the meeting.
Sir, you don't have to make a motion to adjourn.
I'm following the format.
Yeah, you can do yea or nay, and then we can go from there.
At this time, would like to adjourn the meeting. I, we have a yea?
Yea.
At this time, the meeting is adjourned, thank you, sir.
Thank you. And I would send this to the public.
Gotta put it in the record.